I'm gonna call this meeting of the City Council Ordinance Committee to order, January 21st. It's a little after 5:30. We're all in attendance. We do have minutes to approve.
And actually, you have to stand, right?
Yep.
Well, technically, you're in.
I mean, you're always there.
You're right there.
But how does that work?
I think.
I mean, I think we should be okay with the two votes, right?
It should be fine with two votes.
You don't think you're gonna split it?
We might, you know.
So I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to accept the minutes from those from the last meeting.
Yep. Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Looks like nobody's here from the public for public speak time unless Counselor Khan, if you'd like to.
No, not at all. Thank you.
And we don't have any new business yet. And since Counselor Kuzinski, you're here, maybe we can start off with the engine brake. Does that sound like the plan?
It sounds great.
Okay. My only correspondence that I've had since our last meeting on that was from Chief Modder. And the two things that he brought forward as far as having an engine brake ordinance in the city was, A, mountain road. Felt like that was a safety hazard if we didn't allow people to use engine brakes on mountain road. And that he felt like if a fuel truck came down hot, potentially caught fire, that could be something that we didn't quite have the resources to manage. So he was looking for an exemption for that. And an emergency vehicle exemption because fire trucks have engine brakes that they use on a regular basis for, you know, safety and preserving their other brakes. So I thought that those two requests were reasonable. And any other?
Actually, I had a bit of a change of thought. I wondered if we might want to try out Florence Road specifically, engine brake prohibition. As opposed to, I've seen in particular, in other areas. So I would certainly.
Uh huh. That's something to consider.
Throw that on the table as a consideration. And it might give us some experience with the subject. And yet still address the issue that is still raised by the community.
Right.
And be able to post a sign that Florence Road is a tighter lane.
So I think it's something to consider. You know, I, one of the things that I'm, that I've been thinking about as, as it relates to engine brakes is, as you go into communities, basically, generally, you'll see a sign that says, you know, North Hampton prohibits the use of engine brakes in the city. Or whatnot. I'm curious, and I didn't check on this, and I probably should have, but curious the rates of enforcement. Because, you know, and, and not that it necessarily matters, because I think the, the sign can be a deterrent enough. I think one of the pieces that we would definitely have to look into is whether the Board of Public Works and the DPW Director has the funding for any signs. I know oftentimes when we ask for something like that, there.
It might be a little while.
It takes a while, potentially.
It might take a while to post, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know.
But I don't think it should be a determining factor.
No, no. But I think that.
I'll be defeated as a council.
I think that it's, you know, it, it does, if we're never gonna have funding for a sign, then that might make a difference. And so I think it's gonna be important for us to kind of coordinate as we move forward with this. Counselors, there?
Oh, so just two things. One is, actually, I'd like to learn a few things, a couple things.
Okay.
I agree too about enforcement, you know, create if we pass the ordinance, but how it'll be enforced. I also agree with Counselor Kuzinski that it might be a good place to start enforcement, because that's where the majority of the concerns come from. It's supposed to be the hotbed of, of activities. So you can always potentially create an ordinance specifically, language specific before it's early to be expanded from there with amendment. Something I've been thinking about too is that, kind of apropos of Chief Modder's input was, you know, it'd be interesting to reach out to the, to the trucking industry and see if we can get some representatives from there to attend one of our meetings, just to get input about, you know, when they use these things, when they think it's appropriate to use it. You know, because I, I don't drive a truck for a living, and so.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to create a rule that, from my perspective, I just, I think this sounds great. And then someone from the trucking industry is like, oh, yeah, no, that's, I'm gonna crash into a tree if you get this.
Right.
That's what I was gonna say, actually, is that the two things I just wanna, like, I understand the rationale for it, I'm not against it. The two things I kind of wanna, I don't feel like I know enough about yet to really have an opinion on this is, A, what are sort of the public safety implications? Like, is, when you're, are the engine brakes, if they're using those, that more likely to prevent an accident?
Right.
That, I just don't know.
Right.
You know, if somebody tears out of their driveway or in a blind spot and there's a truck coming, you know, is there, what's the actual, the implication of that? And then there's also, you know, the economic implication for the truckers, because, you know, if Chief Modder is saying that in, with their trucks, that they would, like, seriously degrade the,
Brake.
The brakes if they're not using their engine brakes, then my question is, are we imposing that same thing on all the trucks, you know, coming out of factories?
Right. Is it an undue burden?
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't understand, like, what the actual, because that is just something I'd be interested in knowing more about.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think one of, one of the pieces that is important for, you know, and I think that we had discussed this before, that, and this is pretty standard across all engine brake ordinances, that in an emergency, obviously, it's okay to, it's acceptable to use. So, so the ordinance would be like, the use of engine brake is prohibited except in an emergency. And that type of language, I believe, is pretty standard across the board. You know, I do agree though, and it's funny, I did talk to a former city employee who has driven trucks and is kind of knowledgeable about this. And he had some feedback, and I think maybe what we can do is see if we can invite, you know, maybe we can craft a little, like, refine a little bit of language if, if that's what we want to do. But then, you know, have someone that is really knowledgeable about trucks and engine brakes, or jack brakes, or whatever the terminology is, to, to help us understand, A, whether appropriate, whether appropriate to not be allowed. You know, I don't, I don't dislike the idea of having one section be, you know, prohibited, but I'm almost thinking, well, if we're doing it, you know, we probably don't want people using engine brakes on Route 10 coming into, on Main Street.
I mean, they use them directly in front of my household.
We don't want them using them.
I don't really care because I.
Between council makes sense.
Because you're used to it. You're kind of used to it, right?
Yeah.
Because they're down the mountain now.
Yeah, and between that and the sirens and the.
It's the last street. So, you know, and so I think there are certain parts of the city where we could improve residents' auditory experience. You know, so they're not so jaded. And, and I would say, you know, probably Holyoke Street, Main Street, North Hampton Street, Florence Road, in the center of town. I mean, those, to me, just stand out as areas that would be not necessary, because they're kind of areas where you should be kind of going slow, the residential areas.
Right.
And, you know, I think 35 mile an hour speed limits. So if they're, that means they're going too fast, probably, if they have to use it, right?
Yeah, I mean, as a resident of Florence Road, I think that's my understanding, is that the reason they're using their engine brakes is because it's, it's a way of getting out of, like, basically, they're already potentially exceeding the speed limit.
Right.
And then they're using their engine brakes, whereas if they were driving more slowly, they might not using their engine brakes enforcement, actually drive in a more slow and potentially more safe manner.
Right.
So I think, I think that's definitely part of what's going on with that approach.
That's a huge plus for me, because I'm all for just slowing down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Who would we, who would we talk to? Who's it?
Well, I can talk to, like I said, there was, and I believe he's applied for the, it was a resignation from the DPW.
Mm-hmm.
I think he's applied for that, but he's a resident. He is the DPW Director in Hadley. And he has a really knowledgeable, so I can ask him if he can move him in.
Sure.
But I, I think he would be someone that could kind of shed some light on that for us.
I wonder if we can find someone who's involved with commercial trucking.
No, it'd be interesting. Like, maybe strong, like buses, do buses have engine brakes?
I mean, maybe even, I wonder if the, like, there has to be, like, local teams just who need some, almost guys who drive trucks, some, some knowledge of that stuff.
Interesting. Do you want to, what, reach out?
Yeah, I'll poke around and see what I can find in terms of, like, industry.
Cool. I think that'd be great. I'll, I'll see if I can get the guy I know, and you can look into that. And maybe, JP, would you be against having those areas that I designated be places that, because I feel like if we're doing it for the residents on Florence Road, it's like, if, if it's an issue for them, just because other people aren't complaining, doesn't mean that we, you know, that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't.
There as well, and poorly as.
You know, I mean, I get the squeaky, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but I mean, it might make sense for other people, and it might be appreciated potentially, if this is something we decide.
I wouldn't have an objection to anyone including this one.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I just thought the idea of a pilot type of thing for there.
Might help it fall rolling.
Yeah, but yeah, whatever works, you know, more signs.
More signs, yeah. Maybe what we can say is Florence Road should get the signs first.
Well, the one thing I'll say about Florence Road is that of all the areas where it's being, you know, appropriate, so the reason it's being, they're probably being used there is because of the hill.
Yeah.
And so, you know, like, as opposed to places where it seems like it would be absurd to use them, again, as far as my layperson understanding, like, you know, Holyoke Street is a slight decline, but by the time you get down the mountain, you probably shouldn't have to use the car house.
Yeah, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, and Main Street, and Route 10, so, again, Florence Road, they're like, oh, there's this hill coming up, and I'm going past it, and maybe should, I'll use my engine brakes. But, I mean, you know, I'm certainly happy to talk about a more broad application, it probably needs a little bit more of a discussion than it did.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I can, I can, where I live, I have, it's like a backdrop of a hill that points right to Route 10, where the state highway meets the town road, and you can hear them at night, you can hear them coming in, and like, it's loud enough to make it all the way.
Loud, that's a loud noise.
And, yeah. It's loud.
It's probably a kind of a, you know.
Okay. So, you know, I think if we do those two things, if I can get my representative in, and you can talk to your, find somebody, and then we can make a final determination on language and go from there. Yeah.
Have we heard anything that, were we gonna try to talk to Holyoke Street in Hampton more about just the implementation and enforcement, or just their, their experience around that in those communities?
Um, I don't remember what we decided on that, but I know I didn't, I didn't reach out to the chief yet. I can.
It was something we discussed about.
Okay.
We talked about was, yeah, but I don't remember what. I remember we were just asking about more, again, more important in those communities. Or maybe it was about enforcement or whatever, but, yeah.
I have a feeling that, you know, it's, it, just with the workload that departments are experiencing, that it's probably something that they wouldn't enforce unless it was blatant in front of them.
Oh, yeah.
And, but in that case, they would have the tools to enforce it.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing for me, like I said, would just need to make sure we get it through the industry, that we're not doing something that's, you know, again, like you said.
Detrimental.
Detrimental, undue burden, like, that seems like a great idea to all of us, but by taking this away, processes, I can't, I can't, I should have looked. Just wanted to make sure we're all the size.
Sounds good. All right, so we'll come back to it, JP.
Excellent.
All right. So it looks like Counselor is there, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we have an updated open container law?
As discussed.
Okay. So let's, Tom, have you been able to see this?
I just, sorry, I just gave it to him.
How about, safety starts at 10 minutes? No, 6:30, yeah, it changed it. Let's just go through it.
Yeah, great.
Does that seem fair?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, do you mind?
I don't mind at all.
Let's, because I think if we just go through each line, then we'll have a better, Tom will get caught up, and it'll be out there. So, consumption of alcoholic beverages in public ways, so possessing open container of alcohol, drinking on streets, sidewalks, parking lots, playgrounds, parks, or cemeteries owned or maintained by the City of East Hampton. So, no person shall consume any alcoholic beverage nor possess or transport any open can, bottle, or other container containing an alcoholic beverage on any city street or sidewalk owned and/or maintained by the City of East Hampton.
And I think that's the original, that's the language that.
That's the original.
At all, or.
Yeah. Okay. No person shall consume any alcoholic beverage nor possess or transport any open can, bottle, or other container containing alcoholic beverage in any parking lot owned or maintained by the City of East Hampton, including but not limited to Cottage Street Municipal Park and Millside Park. That's right?
Yeah, Millside is just cheap, because I think it was, Larry, including.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Discontinued for names.
Yep. No person shall consume any alcoholic beverage nor possess or transport any open can, bottle, or other container containing an alcoholic beverage on any playground or park, including but not limited to Nonotuck Park, Pleasant Green, Millside Park, all city-owned property butting Nashuanic Pond, the Manhattan Rail Trail, and any property owned and/or maintained by the East Hampton City, or by the City of East Hampton Parks and Recreation Department or the Conservation Commission. All city-owned schools to include parking areas of said schools, all cemeteries owned and/or maintained by the City of East Hampton, including but not limited to Perkside Cemetery. And then, one, Parks and Recreation Commission may set designated areas such as rental pavilions for consumption of alcohol at a yearly meeting passed by the Majority Vote Commission and outlined in yearly policies and procedures. Temporary areas allowable for public consumption of alcohol may additionally be further determined per section E below. Okay, so D, this is bold.
This is the, this is the new, this is the incorporation.
So everything else was basically.
Generally, everything existed. The section, section C1, although, yeah, section C1 was added in because, basically, the Parks and Rec was. So, so initially, the Parks and Rec policies were running somewhat counter to what we had. In other words, we basically said you can't consume alcohol in the parks, but their policy says, well, you can, and we'll say, where? So I just wanted to make sure that we meshed that, because that's, because you can drink in the pavilions.
Right.
And they basically set that as a policy year to year.
But it wasn't, it didn't jive with our ordinance?
It semi-sorted did, but I just wanted to make sure that it was, yeah.
Okay, so D. Oh, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
No, just, okay.
Okay. No person shall possess in any place to which the public has right of access, or upon any way or in any place to which members of the public have access, as invitees or licensees in open bottle, can, or other receptacle used to contain an alcoholic beverage that has been opened or has a broken seal, or the contents of which have been partially removed or consumed with the passenger.
That should do it.
With, okay. Yep. Within, okay, within the passenger area of any motor vehicle. So no person shall possess in any place to which. I'm just wondering if the, within the passenger area of any motor vehicle should go up, and no person shall possess in.
I'll have to look. I mean, this was, I think, similar to when Counselor Lynch did the crosswalks.
Like, state law?
I basically lifted this from the state law, double-checked to see if I changed it at all, but I think this is, was almost like, again, verbatim, but.
Because it, I mean, it, just like on initial read, I don't know if you, if you guys feel this, but on initial read, I feel like that whole first sentence almost seems like it's applicable to anywhere until that last little piece.
Yeah, you can move it, yeah.
You know what I mean?
No person shall possess, comma, within the passenger area of any motor vehicle, comma.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, sure. You know, so basically, what do you, what do you think, Tom?
I don't know. I think that it's kind of stuff, it's kind of tricky, because there's two caveats here. One is in any place where the public has right of access, and the other one is within the passenger area of any motor vehicle. And I feel like it's maybe even extra confusing if you stack those caveats on top of one another. So putting one at the beginning of the sentence and one at the end, like, it's not, it's great, it's not great, because it's just confusing to have two caveats.
I hear that.
I don't know if there's a better way to do it. Well, and it could also, yeah, yeah, I could double-check what the state language says, and sometimes, again, if the state language is already kosher, it potentially protects us.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine. You know, I think that, that we might be able to wordsmith that, so the caveat is not as confused. So you could just be like, you know, D, open container in a vehicle, and then.
Oh, you mean like as the title?
Yeah, just so it was like clear from the very outset.
Yeah, that's, that's, like, as a head, as a header.
Yeah, like a header.
Yeah, I think that'd make, that might make more sense.
Okay, I just wanted to, okay. So the passenger area shall include the area designated or designed, designated. To seat the driver and passengers while the vehicle is in operation, and an area that is rarely accessible to the driver or passenger while in a seated position, included, not limited to the glove compartment, provided however, that the passenger area shall not include motor vehicle's trunk or locked glove compartment, or if a motor vehicle is not equipped with a trunk, the area behind the last upright seat, an area not normally occupied by the driver or passenger. Makes sense. Okay. This shall not be applied to passengers of a motor vehicle designed, maintained, and used for the transportation for persons for compensation or the living quarters of a mobile home or trailer, however, the drivers of any such vehicle shall be subject to the vote.
So taxis?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, love as you do this.
So I, didn't, this came up before, that, can you drink in the back of an Uber?
Uh, yeah, right?
I think, I think you can, because it's a paid ride service. Don't.
Right.
But.
But I think, like, under, in the eyes of law, I think you're allowed to.
Yeah, I believe so.
That's something that's not really known, I don't think. No, I mean.
Same people did.
All my friends who drive Ubers are always saying, people are coming, oh, you won't drink.
Oh, really?
It happens all the time.
Oh, interesting. I didn't know that.
It would be something, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's a vehicle.
Yeah.
That we use for the transportation of persons for compensation.
Yep. Yep, it is. Okay, so I, I, go ahead.
Uber code of conduct does not allow in-care alcohol in car to be.
Yeah, so that might, so their policy, their policy.
Yeah, interesting. All right, so are you good? You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Parks and Rec Department Commission by majority vote may allow the possession and use of alcoholic beverages and the consumption thereof at Nonotuck Park, Millside Park, and Pleasant Green for a specific event or occasion, and may impose such conditions on said sale, use, and possession as it deems appropriate. That's fair.
So it's basically granting, ask granting permit, granting the ordinance for power to the Parks and Rec to do what they're basically doing with the new Uber. I totally agree.
I was wondering, I mean, say that there were, would it might, would it might make sense to just say, like, they grant this on any area that they oversee? I mean, is there any specific park that we, like, say that, um.
Right.
Once we pick up the park on the mountain, right, they'll probably want to do, like, wedding receptions or stuff up there.
Actually, that's not a bad, that's not a bad catch, right there.
Yeah, and I think some of that may have had to do with, because that, again, is basically old language, and it may have been that, in the crafting thereof, they determined areas that were, be, it would be.
More likely.
Potentially acceptable, but I agree that maybe some sort of language that says any, any.
Property under their control.
Yeah.
So it'd be, so if we change that, Parks and Recreation Department Commission by majority vote may allow the possession and use of alcoholic beverages and the consumption thereof at properties controlled or, or maintained by Parks and Rec for a specific event or occasion, and may impose such conditions on said sale, use, and possession as it deems appropriate. So.
So you're saying, is this by board, the board, by, by the board, is that specifically on Parks and Rec's department? How, who adds in the Parks and Rec?
Uh, it's the commission.
It's the commission. It says, well, it says.
Well, I put commission in parentheses, because I think we changed it last time.
Yeah. So, and then is that the way, is that the way it works? So when Mil- um, Milpot and Live happens, does the commission have to vote to allow the sale there, or is that something that just is approved?
I think it, I believe it's, I asked, I asked John about this, and I think it's the type of thing where, again, I think they, they take a.
A vote in the beginning of this?
I think they voted, and then, and basically, anyone who has a one-day license in dispense.
In dispense, so.
And I could double-check about that. You'll be able to pick it up to us.
Yeah, make a, make a note. I just, I don't want to, if, if they're, if they do a blanket vote, I don't necessarily know if we need to have them go back and vote again, if that's not their current policy.
Well, I think it would be for the type of thing where, like, say, I don't know. Right, well, that's why there's the, there's the previous, there's the preceding, that preceding clause.
Right.
But I think it would be like, I don't know, like, say there's some festival that Los Angeles has, or, and for what reas, whatever reason, the commission hadn't voted on that, their meeting.
They had a one-day, a one-day.
They want to get a one-day license, but for whatever reason, it's not, they hadn't voted on previously, and the commission needs, and they, and they suspend, they suspend it for, well, they could come to us for that.
Yeah, because that's, that's later, right?
Yeah.
So, um, so just making a note of that. Uh, the City Council by majority vote may temporarily suspend the operation of this ordinance to permit the public sale, use, and/or possession of alcoholic beverages and consumption thereof in any of the locations listed in paragraphs A, B, or C, and may impose such conditions on si, on such sale, use, and possession as deemed appropriate. Suspension of this ordinance by either body shall include the designated area or areas for consumption, including all applicable geographical boundaries and relevant dates or time period for suspension. So that would be what potentially could, for like cultural chaos.
Yes, yes. I mean, it's a one.
But that would be the, the clause that would allow people not to be jammed in with little pens.
Correct. So if, if the organizers of cultural chaos wanted to say, hey, we'd like to have, you know, basically, you know, open container at Cottage Street, the idea would be that they would draw up a proposal and say, from, like, from this street to this street, we need, we're in these streets, this would be the area. They'd probably have some, a plan, like, okay, there'd be an ID check where you first enter, like, say.
Like a cop bracelet.
You get a bracelet, and like, a cup, that's, that's the only cups that you could use, or something like that, that's designated, designated, so that way, you know, you got all people walking around with all the colored solo cups, or something like that. And they would come to us, and we would.
Say yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that type of thing, or, yeah, yeah.
Would it be closed within, enclosed area?
So it would be within, so if they closed off Cottage Street?
Close the street.
Close the street.
Is it roped off? Well, it depends on the.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could, we could set whatever, whatever.
Restrictions.
Restrictions we thought we should.
Yeah, so I think it would be something like they'd either present the map and/or a written description of all the bordering, you know, geography of the city where it's permissible and that kind of thing. And I've spoken to the chief about that, and he was open to that.
Okay.
So would that kind of thing be strictly for the street, for each individual business could dictate? Do they have the authority to dictate what happens in front of their business, or certainly people couldn't carry liquor in their business, but what if having people standing around with a beer outside of a business might be counter to welcoming people into the business? I mean, it might, there might be need to be a buffer between the front door of the business and where you could add.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because it depends, what, where's, is, where does the public, how much does the business own of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's a public way.
I mean, again, I think that if this were to happen, and it's still hypothetical, these would be the sort of things that we would discuss, when we impose such conditions as deemed appropriate.
I mean, because it, and it could even be, like, instead of keeping people in, like, the little pens in their areas, like, maybe you just open it so people can walk down the street.
Yeah.
And then there's other, you know, designated areas where you can, where you can.
Move from pen to pen.
Pen to pen.
We need word problems to pen.
Shepherd everybody through. Okay.
Yeah, and I think, I think, again, you come up with language, I mean, I, because I mean, well, I won't get into cultural chaos too much, but I think that.
I mean, we don't even know if they would want to do that, and, but there might be other things.
Right.
There might be other, you know, areas where people might want to do it. So, like, potentially, the fields over by the basketball courts or something.
Or like, what if like a dead-end street wanted to do like a block party where people were, just, they could close off the street.
It's true, technically, that's, yeah, that's a good point. It is technically.
Hard block wants to.
Yeah. Westview Terrace did that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, technically, that's like, if I've got, like, you know, if I've got a neighbor and I'm walking down the sidewalk to him from my neighbor's house drinking a beer.
Yeah, nothing to get arrested.
You know, I mean. You know, I mean, maybe no one cares if it's on a side street, but like it's technically so. I could see if I wanted to do, not that I would do a block party on Holyoke Street because I would be precious, but like, you know, if I live somewhere else and I want to do it, that might be something where I go and ask the city council if it's cool.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and just, I mean, to go back, not to, not to talk about this too much, but the initial proposal for the pedal tabber was just to indefinitely suspend open container, open container regulations on the Manhattan rail trail.
Right.
Via this ordinance, exact ordinance, so.
And so that would come to us and we would say, uh, either yes, we're suspending the open container law on the bike path. Definitely.
Right.
Or no.
Right.
Or there's going to be some restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Alright, so it looks like the only thing that was changed for the police powers on was the fine. Is that correct?
The fine, we, you know, again, in the first draft, I had proposed just via some discussions about the consideration for, you know, consumption, open container consumption on, at schools or daycares and the committee discussed it and we picked that out. And then initially the, oops, I shouldn't say five, I shouldn't say three.
Mine's a three.
Oh, oh, but there it says five.
Oh.
Yeah, oh. And then initially I proposed the state fine, the state level fine for, um, open container vehicle. And we agreed also that reduce to three hundred and then again, it's officers discretion if they want to, when they want to.
Yep, and I, and I think that makes sense.
So yeah, so the fine, I think, was increased slightly. I don't remember what it was before, but, you know, I, if I, yeah. And that's up to a...
It is.
Yeah, officer's discretion, yeah.
Is there some specific language that we have to include that I would find you owe the city versus the county or?
If it's, if it's, if it's, so if it's within local ordinance and the officer uses the local ordinance to issue the citation, then that money comes to the city. So this would allow the officer's discretion to either issue a local ordinance, um, ticket or a statement.
And we have to designate that on all of the ordinances based a local possibility of taking it?
Um, if we, if we, so what we do is we, within the ordinance, we give the police powers of arrest.
Yep.
Um, and to fine.
So it's every single ordinance has to have that, isn't there? And you can't have a blanket one?
Yeah, no. Um, okay. Um, and, I mean, I, I feel like, um, the one piece about, I don't know if that's enough to hold it up necessarily. I mean, I feel, and I know this is Tom's first time that we have that, I mean, I feel relatively comfortable with this.
You, the piece about the language of the cars?
No, like, um, so the changing of the, the parks, just like a blanket.
Yeah, I mean, do you just, I mean, what, um, I mean, probably just because of language, like, um, any property owned or maintained by the Parks and Rec Department?
Yeah.
They say here's how you're owned or main, well, that's owned or maintained by the city of East Hampton. I think there's earlier on we use a specific.
Yeah, specific around like what they...
Property owned and/or maintained by the city of East Hampton Parks and Recreation Department or conservation, well, we should even phrase the conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if there'd be, would there ever be a case where there's, like a land, maybe the, well, I guess they'd go to the city council.
They'd have to go to the city council.
So, so if we just said, um, um, like took, took out the last four lines of paragraph E, so starting at Non-Talk Park, and just replace them with, um, just...
Probably section C maybe?
Yeah, in section C, any property owned and/or maintained by the city of East Hampton Parks and Recreation Department. And that just leaves the door open.
I'm good with that.
You know, any new parks.
Yeah, which, there could be some parks that, that are kind of a split between Parks and Rec and conservation.
Right, and if it got hairy, because they could just come to the council.
They can just come to the council.
So are we prohibiting in all situations, all city-owned property? For example, would we consider?
Unless, unless they come to the city council asking for it.
Unless they have come to the council.
Yeah, then it's prohibited.
Is it said there? I only heard the Parks and, oh, we ain't part of Parks and Rec.
No, it's, uh, so it's no person shall consume any alcoholic beverage nor possess or transport any open can bottle or other container containing alcoholic beverage on any city street sidewalk owned or maintained by the city of East Hampton. And then it says by any parking lot maintained, um, and then any park or cemetery. So it basically covers everything. Any city-owned property.
They probably should say city-owned property because there's some city-owned properties that have parks.
Yeah, um...
Well, but that's in the, that's in the first two, isn't that the first two paragraphs?
First two is sidewalks and rights of way. The second one is parking lot.
Let's say the old clove landfill, or land across the street from the landfill. I guess that's technically not, or Saturday Park and city-owned property is on parking lots.
You wouldn't want people going out there drinking.
Well, what if you're taking over, what if I'm coming to the council?
Exactly.
Okay, so in B, you just took out parking lot and put in just property.
Property. Now...
Um, yeah, so I wonder why this was structured the way it was before. I'm just looking at, um...
Well, I can tell you because I was, I was on the committee when we passed this.
Right, yeah.
And it was basically, it was, we were looking at specific areas that were problems.
Sure.
Um, and, and so when the chief brought it to us, but that's how I think it was McMahon. Might have been Sliz, but I think it was McMahon. Um, he wanted just to target those specific properties.
Well, just for the sake of, I mean, maybe the easiest thing, so the easiest thing to do would be to keep these and then just put in like another quick area, but not like standing, any, any public, any public space owned by the city of East Hampton, not otherwise delineated in these preceding paragraphs or something like that. I don't know.
Uh, I mean, I feel like it might be easier just to like, um, just to, in B, take out parking lots and just say, um, any, any property owned and maintained by the city of East Hampton. You know, just keep it simple.
Mm-hmm, so I hope they like less words.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm struggling to think of any situation that there's like any property that we have that we're just fine with people.
It's fine with people checking on it.
Unless like without, you know, running that by.
Like, does the pond count? Like if you're in there a little inflatable and you have a beer out there?
Well, yeah, what's clearly happening is they're outlining very specific.
Very specific areas.
Like these types of places.
Yeah.
And so...
Because those were the problem areas.
Right.
That fishermen too, you know, so.
Yeah.
Um, but it does say in here on the outskirts of the ponds, right? I feel like I remember.
You know, I almost, I kind of like the neatness of how they did that. Like they have the different defined types of areas. And so I'm almost wondering if just adding like another definition, I don't know. But yeah, we could, but...
Or leaving it open to the savvy drinker to find.
Get a nap.
The one spot.
It's not designated, I can't do it here.
Right, because like for instance, like, so like the solar field, like we could trust just a public space, right?
Yeah. Well, I think there are no trespassing signs there, so.
Yeah, 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 I know that, but I'm just looking at, so that's, that's not a city street or sidewalk. It's not a parking lot. Um, it's not a park. Uh, or, and any property owned or maintained by the city of East Hampton, correct?
So maybe we just...
What if you just take out?
That's a park.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it should make another, other paragraph, any, any, yeah, so, well, it's up to, whatever you guys think is appropriate. I think, uh, paragraph says any other property owned or maintained by the city of East Hampton.
Um, I, well, so here's, here's the thought. Um, how about we just change A and take out B? To make it no person shall consume any alcoholic beverage nor possess or transport any open can bottle or other container containing alcoholic beverage on any cities, um, city-owned or maintained property in the city of East Hampton. And then we don't even have to say parking lots because that takes it there. And then we shorten it. It's more concise. I think it's more clear.
I mean, I think that just because some people might look at, I think that's, I might, just to be a little extra specific, say any street sidewalk or property.
Yeah.
Yes, street sidewalk, parking lot, as you can mention, at least that like...
So at least, so we can add, or any other property owned and or maintained by the city of East Hampton.
And then also spell out the parks though.
Yeah, and then, well, parks are to be specific because they have an allowance for people doing this.
Right, so just a...
It's different from the allowance that we can potentially give if we so choose.
Right, so it's like, sidewalks, parking lots, or any other property owned and/or maintained by the city of East Hampton.
And that way it's shorter, not longer.
Yeah, you know what's the one thing, I'm just suddenly thinking of though, is are there any like, well, the housing authority isn't the same as East Hampton.
No.
But is there any like, is there any properties that we might maintain that like are like residential in their nature?
That's a good thought.
Or, or I mean, like, actually, like even like, uh, if you take like Old Town Hall, right? If they were to have like a, you know, on the arts night, they have a...
That is interesting.
But, yeah, like, because I don't want to be judging, like, I don't want to be saying anything about like what, so maybe we actually do want to walk this back because, um, because like if, if there's like an event at a city-contained, city-owned or maintained property that's inside and they are...
But they'd probably get a, they'd probably get some form of a license.
I don't think, I think that basically every business on, like during the art walk, just has beer and wine selling it.
And, and they're allowed to do that under the law. They can, unless we prohibit that. So, um, I think that's a really good point. On art walk, they're inside, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be giving it outside. So do we just specify outdoors?
Well, but does that mean you can walk into city hall with a beer?
Well, it means if you wanted to have a reception in city hall and have beer or wine, then you could, if you weren't selling it. And which I think is totally within the realm of...
But if I just walk into, let's say I came with, like, let's say, you know, I was hanging out at the city committee.
What you got there? Uh, I like, I don't know, it's pretty interesting. But I think that your point is, is well-taken. It, it does make, because especially with the redevelopment of Old Town Hall, not, not to mention, you know, the, um, uh, the old, God, why is it escaping me right now? JP, one of the massage schools there, we, we did it in property a hundred years ago.
The old, the old, the old...
Yeah, the old, um, like they had a liquor license for the art bar. And, but that's leased property that is still city property.
That's no, we sold, we sold the property.
Oh, the seller doesn't count.
It's not ours.
Okay, good. That's good. I don't remember doing that, but we leased it.
We were on vacation.
I was there, of course I was there.
Yeah, and I think we wrote, we wrote the restrictions.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we did.
But it was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago. So we did it once.
These things are all pertaining to outdoor, so, I mean, a good person like us, the chief of...
Let's, alright, so do we want to just wait one meeting on this one?
Oh, I'm not in any rush.
So let's, alright, let's clarify, let's, let's do this. Let's clarify outdoor spaces. Let's run it by the chief and see if he has any thoughts, especially around if it's city-owned property that could potentially, you know, house, um, you know, something inside that where people would be drinking. Like Old Town Hall, I imagine that when they are up and running, they're going to want to have a liquor license and it's going to...
At least beer and wine.
Yeah.
But they'll have a liquor license.
But they'll have a liquor license, but if we restrict it on a local ordinance, how, that, the liquor license might not be, if we restrict it, no alcohol in city property, then the liquor license, A, might not be granted, or B, might be null and void because it breaks city ordinance.
Yeah, he also might have some input about what would be, about the, the structure of the, um, specific areas.
Okay, so let's, let's do that then, and then we'll come back to this, which I think is fine. I don't necessarily feel like there's a big rush on this.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to be, yeah, getting, yeah.
Um, how would you guys like to look at a calendar?
Uh, I'd love to.
Because we'll try to start going from, to six.
That would be, I really appreciate that.
I'm, I'm okay with six. Uh, I usually be out for about seven or two things, but.
Okay.
You're...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, do, do we want to look at, uh, where are we, March and January?
I can't do the fourth.
Okay, you can't do February fourth?
Could maybe sort of theoretically do that at six o'clock, we type, uh...
Okay, well, if you want, we could go to the eleventh.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work for you, Tom?
Uh, yeah, I've got...
February eleventh.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, February eleventh. Okay, six o'clock.
Theoretically, do you want to do the second and fourth, uh?
I think, I think if we can try to do that, that'd be good. I just know the reason why I like the eleventh is because I'm going to be out of the country on the eighteen.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. I mean, I, I have a standing appointment at seven o'clock, literally across the street on Tuesdays, so.
Yeah, if we do six and, that's fine. Perfect. So we'll see you guys the eleventh?
Yeah.
And I'll announce that on the fifth.
So, eleven, two hundred hours. Okay.
And I have a meeting coming up in eight minutes, so that would be entertaining.
Well, I was just going to say, the chairperson, Jeremy, I will, I'll just send you an email just clarifying the questions before I send them. I'll send you an email just making sure I understand what questions, not I won't miss anything else I send to the chief.
Okay, that works. Great.
What you doing, Eric?
I'll just clear it.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you, gentlemen.